Okay, we're coming back at 5:41.
Are we ready to proceed?
We're ready to proceed.
Okay.
I thought we were done, though. We're not done?
Um...
I thought you went through all... That's why I'm asking, because I thought you went through all of them already.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask some questions of Lisa.
Okay.
Let's start with number six, Lisa. Have you ever come into possession of a personnel file by any member of... Or any city employee?
No.
Okay. Did you come into any document that may have... May have shown that the background information... The background search on the city manager may not have been up to par with what was done... Was ordered by the commission?
Yes.
And what is that document?
This document here that I...
Can you read it for me?
Yep. It's 7/27/2021. "Jim Heslop at the July 20 special meeting described background checks with Pfeiffer Investigations. Level one, police/fire employee; level two, corrections employee; level three, civilian employee; level four, basic entry." Motion one, motion to move forward with the subcommittee to begin with legal representation extending an offer to Holly Tatman. Motion two, motion to waive competitive bidding for level-two background check. Motion two.
Motion three? Oh, two motions, sorry. You're right.
No, two. "Motion to approve an amount not to exceed $3,500 to pay for a background check. Discussion with city attorney. Per our discussion with city attorney Bob Davis, it was determined that the investigation was being hampered by the intrusive nature of the background check. He suggested the modification of a level-two background check to better suit the position. It was decided that level-two background check be modified as follows. Remove in-depth, in-home applicant interview. Remove up to seven current and previous employers in last 10 years. Interview superiors, coworkers, subordinates, and human resources. Partially remove detailed interviews with spouse, significant other, family, and personal references to strike detailed interviews with spouse, significant other, and family."
So what, to you, does that appear to be, simply?
Just a document that looks to me like the clerk put together.
And would that be, by your interpretation, this is like a summary of minutes of a here... Meeting of some type?
Yeah, this was part of our commission meeting. I don't know when this happened. I'm assuming this is when she claimed she called the city attorney.
Okay. So this would be part of a commission committee meeting, is your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. So nothing that would be in a private personnel file?
Correct.
And that is the only document that you came into possession with? Is that correct?
Yeah, this one, yeah.
And they make some allegations that you came into possession of some letters. Did you come into possession of any letters?
There was two letters.
I know. They were letters, they said, from Crosby-Laxington, is what they said. I don't know.
Oh, that was the anonymous letter. I did not have a copy of the anonymous letter.
So you never actually received that?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And so, um... There's nothing in here that would require you to... I mean, is there any charter order that says you have to bring this directly in front of the commission because you received this document?
No. But I did take it to him at the September 2 meeting and passed it out.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So you did bring this to the attention of the commission?
Yeah. Waited until a public meeting.
Okay. Was it the next public meeting that was available?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Can I see that document?
Yeah.
I just want to verify.
We've never seen this.
Okay.
Can I just see that real quick?
You handed this out at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna start with down here, and you guys can move left or right and pass it down.
She didn't pass it out.
Was it that or the letters?
You did not hand that out at the meeting.
Did not.
Well, maybe I didn't hand that... I handed these two out.
Okay, so...
So you did not hand out that letter?
I was... I had it there to hand out.
You just said you handed it out.
You didn't.
I'm just asking a question, Lisa. You said you handed that out, and I'm asking...
I thought I had handed it out.
There was only one copy of that.
All right, all right. There was only one copy of that communication, and it was in the personnel file.
Hold on, actually, I let... Hold on, hold on, hold on. I let you go through your entire thing, and then I let you... Then I cross-examined your people. And so, how about we follow the same procedure that I offered you?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So...
So I had copies, meant to hand it out. I must not have handed that out. I did get to these two.
Okay.
But...
All right, so, um...
But I read that to Mr. Davis over the phone, so he was aware of that letter.
Okay, you did. All right, and...
Chris, is this the letter that...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm just asking. I gotta know where this came from. This was the only copy. These are your personnel files.
Hold on, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, right now, I'm actually asking questions of Ms. Hendrick?
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, well, right now, this isn't...
We need to come back to this.
You had your opportunity to come back.
Go ahead, we'll come back to this.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
So, um...
It's taken out of the personnel file.
Did you have... Was there anything in that... Is there anything in there that is private?
No.
That would not be coming out of personnel file?
It should not be. It'd be a public record.
Yeah. And you did not take it out of any personnel file?
Correct.
In fact, you didn't create that document?
Correct.
Who gave... Where did you receive that document from?
I received it from the police chief.
Okay. And who is that?
Jim Heslop.
Okay. And, um... So that is a... Appears to be just a recording of minutes of a meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So allegation six, that says that you came into possession of a personnel record... File record, is not accurate, is it?
No. I don't have anything from anybody's personnel file.
And you have no way of getting into the personnel file?
Correct.
And it's your understanding that the personnel files are locked?
Correct.
Okay.
But that was in a personnel file.
Oh, excuse me. We'll get back to it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Um... And what... There's no charter... They don't cite an allegation six. They cite no charter that you actually violated in that, do they?
Correct.
Okay. There's no charter provision that says if you come into contact with a document that you have to provide that to the commission or anything else?
No.
Especially one that appears to be merely a recording of minutes?
Correct.
Okay. Would the... Would the minutes of a commission meeting be private?
No. Unless it's a closed session.
Okay. And there's no evidence in there that was from a closed session?
Correct.
Okay. So you had no reason to suspect that that came from a personnel file?
Correct.
There was no private information in there?
Correct.
It didn't stand out to you as anything that was inappropriate?
Correct.
I mean, if you're looking at that record, would it be... I mean, any person looking at that wouldn't think, oh, God, this is private information?
Correct.
Okay. Um... So you actually communicated that information to Mr. Davis?
Correct.
Okay.
I read it to him over the phone.
Is that... Now, I guess that... So now, we're done with number six, I think.
Wait, can I have that document back?
Yeah.
No, we're not. We're gonna ask questions on it.
Well, I need it, though, for a minute. I read Mr. Davis, this whole section of discussion with the attorney, and asked him if he had done this, and he told... And he approved this, and he told me no.
Okay. And...
So that bothered me.
Why is that?
Well, because they're claiming that he did all this.
Well, we don't know who's claiming that, do we?
Yes. I don't know whoever wrote this. And when I read this exact thing to him, and I asked him, "Did you do this?", and he said, "No".
Okay. Um... So, uh... Going on... Continuing with your conversations with Mr. Davis, um... Did you order him to initiate an investigation?
No. I basically told him what the status was, that I... The information I had. He said he was gonna initiate his own investigation.
Okay. So you just told him what you had learned?
Correct.
And he said, "I'm gonna do it on his own initiative"?
Correct.
You haven't...
He said, "I have to go out and investigate this now".
Okay. And you didn't order him to do so?
No.
You didn't ask him to do so?
No. I just provided the information.
Okay. And you have no power to order any investigation by him, do you?
Correct.
Okay. Um... And is there any... Any charter that prevents you from... Any charter that would prevent you from contacting the city attorney?
No. Everybody on the board contacts him.
Okay.
On a regular basis. In fact, they even contacted him...
I don't. I've never contacted a city attorney.
Hold on. Never. Ma'am.
On a regular basis, never.
I asked you a bunch of questions, and you were, like, shaking your head, and you didn't want to talk, and now, all of a sudden, you want to talk?
Well, tell the truth.
Hold on. Stop.
Tell the truth.
Stop. Stop.
Just let him go.
At the September 2 meeting, our city attorney said that he had three phone calls from the people here because I was parked over at the police station.
Oh, okay.
And I guess that was a crime.
All right.
Obviously, they are contacting him.
You were parked where? All right. All right. Did you ever represent that to any attorney or any other person that you were looking to retain or engage into an agreement with an attorney?
No.
Other than Mr. Davis? Outside of Mr. Davis?
As far as Plunkett and Cooney?
Yeah, Plunkett and Cooney, any other attorney firm?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Um... And it's your understanding that you received a... A formal complaint?
Correct.
And by a city employee?
Correct.
And a form... A city employee has the right to make a formal complaint to a commissioner?
Correct.
And there is, in fact, some personnel policies and procedures in the City of Emily... City of Marine City that has been published. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you have some language there, is that correct?
Yes.
And what... Can you please highlight... Or at least let them know what section you're in, so that if they want to file along, they can... What page?
I'm in the Personnel Policies and Procedures of the City of Marine City Manual, page 5.
It's gonna be more than page 5, isn't it? Or no?
That's the page I'm on.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Page 5.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
It starts on page 4.
Yeah.
And that's actually the pertinent portion of the complaint.
Violations of this policy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so scroll over to page 5 and read the section that relates. Relevant section.
No, no. 4, first section.
Please.
That's where you gotta start.
Pardon?
You gotta start from page 4, the first section. That's where the harassment policy starts.
I understand, but we're only talking about a certain section of it. For... I mean, if you want to read it, you can, but it doesn't matter. So it's the second paragraph of page 5, correct?
Yes.
All right.
"All complaints will be treated seriously and investigated. Further, anyone in a management or supervisory position who becomes aware of any potential harassment or discrimination, even if told in confidence, is required to notify their supervisor, the city manager, the city attorney, or a city commissioner who is not subject of the concern immediately."
Very good. All right, is there anything else you want to read?
Um, let's see. "Employees are required to report any inappropriate retaliatory conduct within three days to one of the individuals who is not subject of their concern, their supervisor, city manager, city attorney, or city commissioner."
Okay. So you were within your rights to accept a complaint?
Correct.
Correct. And looking at the... They have the right to bring it to a city commissioner if it deals with someone that's in a supervisory position, correct?
Correct.
And the complaint you received dealt with a person in a supervisory position?
Correct.
It dealt with the city manager, is that right?
Yep.
And was it... Did it deal with anyone else, or just the city manager?
No. She named the city manager, the clerk, and the attorney.
Okay. So, um... At that point in time, um... Those were all people that were named in this formal complaint, including the attorney. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so, based on some of that, your information with the way the charter is written, bringing it to this... The actual city attorney, Mr. Davis, could be a potential issue because he's one of the people named in the complaint?
Correct.
Okay. And, um... So, again, pursuant to Section 13A, you then contacted who?
I contacted our HR attorney, Plunkett and Cooney. I sent them an email with the retaliation complaint.
And...
Which is right.
So you sent them one email?
One email, yep.
And?
And they said they would have somebody contact me about it.
Okay.
The following day.
And?
And Courtney Nichols contacted me, and I explained the situation, that I was only one commissioner, that I felt I had sent an email to the entire board on the issue. I felt that nobody...
So you sent this to the board as well?
I sent... Yeah. The whole board got her complaint.
Oh, okay.
And then I sent them an email saying, "We need to do something about this. We need to have a special meeting. We need to talk to our HR attorneys. We couldn't go to the three people that were named in the complaint."
Okay.
I asked them, "What is everybody gonna do?". I got not one response from any of the commission.
Okay. So how long was your phone conversation with Plunkett and Cooney?
Five or 10 minutes.
Okay. And you sent one email, and that was the extent of it?
That's it.
Okay.
And then she told me she was gonna contact our attorney. I gave her his name and number, and she contacted him, and that's the last contact I had.
And there has... Subsequently, the commission has actually opened up an investigation, is that right?
Correct.
The board minis shows that they hired a firm to investigate, correct?
Correct.
This allegation?
Yep.
And did the HR attorney advise you on that you followed the correct procedure?
She told me that, yes, that I did the right thing by bringing it to her so that they could take care of it.
Okay.
That was...
And this was a company that, to your understanding, is a commissioner that was retained by the commission for HR services? And this dealt with a human resource employee, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that's really kind of outside the scope of Mr. Davis, anyway, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. I felt based on the fact that he was named in the complaint.
Yeah.
May I bring up a point?
Yeah. Bring up a point.
Okay. So the procedure wasn't actually followed correctly, which is why I kind of wanted you to read from the beginning of where it starts.
Okay.
The procedure indicates that you should first contact the mayor...
When you say...
Who?
The complain...
Her or... The complain.
Okay, yeah.
The complain should first contact the city... Their supervisor, city manager, or mayor within seven days of the incident. The portion of the manual, Policy and Procedures, that was pointed out is for a retaliation against that complaint, not the complaint itself that was initiated. So they jumped straight to step 2 and didn't, you know, go through the proper channels to begin with.
Well, not really. It says here also, "To report may not be made to the person who is subject of the concern."
Doesn't the very last sentence on that page? "The report may not be made to a person who is the subject of the concern."
They didn't come to me, and I'm the mayor.
Well, I understand that, but the...
Doesn't it say that?
My understanding is...
Subject of the concern.
The subject of the concern is the complaint. So I guess the idea is that you don't go to...
Yeah, you don't go... But where should they have started?
Well, they have the opportunity to go right to the commissioner.
No. Where does it say in that paragraph?
It says, "This report may not be made to a person who is..." So you don't make the report... So the employee doesn't make the report to...
Yeah, was the mayor a subject of concern?
Yes.
No.
Oh, yes.
I was not named in there. I've never been named in there.
She didn't even send you the complaint.
Well...
No.
Hold on. Where does it say?
It doesn't. They're allowed to go to any person. And when we changed these procedures, you were supposed to update this to say that for every one of these options when we did that. And we did that at a public meeting, that it was so the commission... And they could go to any commissioner. That line there should have been corrected.
But it...
Because you did it through the whole document.
Well, it should have been... Well, I mean, it...
It should say the supervisor, city manager, mayor, or the commission. It's not just the mayor.
So I guess the complainant went to her.
Went to the whole commission.
Well, went to the whole commission.
To the whole commission, sorry.
The whole commission.
Who, after I reviewed our Policies and Procedures manual...
Yeah.
Saw, "I'm a newer commissioner. You know, I just can follow the letter of the law of what we have written down here. I received a handbook at the beginning, and this is what it said. So I made that point. The commission, as a body, ended up calling a special meeting, and then we ended up dealing with this."
So... Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. I guess my point is...
What?
Hold on, hold on. My point is this, Mr. Ross. Even... Let's say that we agree on that. So the complainant didn't follow the proper procedure, okay? That isn't on a commissioner who gets it brought to them. That's not their issue. That's the complainant's issue. And so, you know, once it's brought to the attention of the commission, and we have a situation here, it clearly allows for them to be... To hear one in this section I read. It clearly allows for them to hear it. And so, um... You know, once it's there and...
You read the one in... On page 5?
Yeah. It clearly allows for them to take... To accept it. You all received it. You all dealt with it at the same time. So... And really, I mean, what allegation that has been made, you know... You know, that is really a separate issue from what she did. Okay? Because her issue is, once they have the complaint, they have the ability... You have the right to contact an outside counsel who was, you know, in the HR, clearly under Section 13. And so, you know, the issue really isn't what the complainant did. She may or may not have followed the right procedure. She... Maybe she should have went to the mayor first, or only the mayor. She brought it to everyone's attention. So the mayor was included in that, I guess, right?
No.
Nope. She sent to everyone but the mayor? Correct.
Okay, so that means, you know, obviously, either she... You know, and I can't put... I don't even begin to speculate what her position there is, or if it's regarding, you know, if she intended to name the name. I can't get into that, because that would be assuming, you know, her... What her motives are here and so on. I can only deal with what was written down. Obviously, she did not name Mayor Verkaman in the writing, you know? Whether she did subsequently after that, or any deposition, I have no idea. But, again, what she did is not really... I mean, how she dealt with it is how she dealt with it, I guess. And what... How you guys dealt with it by naming a investigator later on, I guess that was up to you guys, too, to do that. And you had the power to do that, and you chose to do it. End of story. But there's no allegation that she did anything wrong, I guess, is what we're talking about here. What did she do? She didn't make a complaint. She didn't file a formal harassment suit or workplace retaliation suit. So really, the... I mean, I agree that maybe she should have included the mayor in that. I mean, probably should have included... Unless she's, you know, making some allegation, then, of course, you wouldn't, because she would be a person of... That's maybe above her, perhaps. But... Or subject of the concern. It says, "Report shall not be made to a person of the subject of the concern." But...
The mayor was not a subject.
I understand that. I get it.[1398.16] But I'm just saying that I can't read into why she did that. And it's really not relevant to the situation, because it doesn't reflect on what she did. Everything she did is within the charter rules. All right? And that's really what we're talking about here. What things did she do? We cannot control what emails are sent to us. We cannot control, you know, what people come to us with issues. You know, you are a representative body, people are going to come to you with issues. You can't control that.
We can control what we do with the information.
Yeah, and there's, there's nothing in the charter. I agree. You're exactly right. That is right on. You get to control what is done with the, the information in relationship to the charter of this city. And there's not been one piece of language in the charter that's been cited. Now, maybe there's something in the charter I haven't read, but not anything that's been cited that says that she, she did wrong. Not one. There's nothing in there that says, you know, that she must come to the commission immediately, that she must do this. You know, the thirteen, the, the very first one they cited, 3.13G, it has nothing to do with that.
Counselor, are you, can we, are you asking questions, or?
Yes. I was referencing Mr. Ross, he kinda wanted to interject there, and that's okay. So, I thank you for that. All right. So, um-
So, can I ask a question?
Well, let me, I'm gonna go through all of their allegations, and then I guess you guys have a right to cross-examine Ms. Hendrick.
Press-examine? Just ask questions, right?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Same thing. Yeah.
Well, we're not, we're not under oath, or in a court of law.
Well, okay.
We're just asking questions.
We're just asking, well, all right. I mean, hopefully, everyone's telling the truth here. I don't know, though.
Including your client.
My client's telling the truth.
No, she's not, because I didn't get that information that she just passed out. She said that she gave it to everybody at the city-
Well, obviously, she missed-
I corrected myself.
Yes, all right. So, she misspoke. All right, let's not, you know, the amount of times you're, let's not even delve into that, after your testimony. So, 13.14, you've never entered into an agreement, you have no signed agreement with any special counsel or any term, firm, law firm?
No.
You've never fraudulently entered, signed that you have the, the right of the council to enter into a contract on behalf of the council?
No.
And they produced no contract?
Correct.
And, um, your understanding was that this email, I mean, were you actually thinking there was gonna be any charge there?
No, not for a five-minute question. Concerned, just to get this moving.
Yeah.
Because I was concerned about liability.
Okay. And, um, so, under 3.11 of this charter, it's, and this is under Allegation 3, it says that you have a duty to, or that you received a direct contact from department head, Megan Pierce, and department, and did not communicate that information to the city manager or city commission. Do you, under 3.11, where does it say in there that you cannot receive, have a direct contact from them?
Nowhere.
Did you give any department head, Ms. Pierce, Mr. Heslop, any orders?
No.
All right. Do you, is it your understanding that a commission member may ask questions for, of a department head?
Correct.
For purposes of inquiry?
Yep.
You have, was never received a personnel file?
Correct.
And, uh, there's nothing, there's nothing in here that limits your inquiry?
Correct.
To financial, only financial matters, or only-
Correct.
You know, workplace issues, right?
Right.
So, you would agree that Allegation 3 also doesn't, there's nothing in here that you violated in Allegation 3?
No.
You, you were acting in your, what you believe to be in the public's best interest?
Correct. And I did, I did contact a number of commissioners. So did Jim. Jim helped me. We were trying to get them, so they understood the information after I contacted them. Um, I talked to Mr. Ross. I talked to Wendy. I talked to Bill. I could not get ahold of you. Jim talked to Mr. Bryson and Mr. Ross.
Okay, so you did contact, so that's not, that, even the allegation itself is, is not accurate.
So, I, I was left out of that?
Because you were involved in it.
No, I was not involved in it.
To us, you were involved in it.
To you, that's your opinion?
That's right.
I was not involved in it.
Again, in this, does it say somewhere in here?
Show me the complaint that says I was involved in it.
Does it say anywhere in here that you have to contact every single commissioner?
No.
Does it even place a duty on you to do so?
No.
You were only doing that for the purposes of openness?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's not really open when you exclude someone.
All right, and were, was it your understanding that, for some reason, that mayor, the mayor was included?
Yes.
But there was not, but she was not named in that, in that letter? Would you agree?
She was not named in that letter, no.
Okay. But again, you had no duty to contact those people, correct?
Correct.
You just did it out of openness, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not open, because-
So, um, so, when, tell me about what happened with this, again, with Issue 4. You never ordered him to investigate?
No, I just advised him the information that I had, that I was told that the investigation wasn't done properly for the city manager. And he said he was gonna go out and investigate. He, he went and did his, he contacted Mike Itrich, the clerk.
How do you know he did those things?
He told me he did.
Oh, okay.
And then he said, he came back and he said, yes, it's, from what he could tell from all of it, it was not done correctly.
Did he ever say to you, "Whoa, whoa, 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 you're violating Charter Number 6.8 by bringing this to my attention"?
No, because everybody calls him.
That's not true.
Did you order, hold on.
That's not true. I've never called him.
Did you, um, you never, so you, he never said, "Whoa, whoa, you can't contact me"?
Correct.
All right, and you've contacted him in the past?
Rarely ever. This is like the first time I had something serious to contact him with, unless I contacted him about the fire authority which I'm on.
Okay. And never once before did he ever tell you that it was a violation of some charter?
No.
No. And, um, it's your understanding that, that other people on the commission have contacted him at times?
Correct.
And you've never heard anyone say, "Oh, there's some charter violation out there that says you can't do that"?
That's right.
And you have no power to order him to investigate anything?
That's correct.
The commission has the power to do that.
Correct.
Okay. And also, you would agree that, uh, that you never signed a contract, it says that you signed a contractual legal relationship with Plunkett Cooney?
No, I did not.
The, the commission entered into that?
Yeah, just because I sent an email does not constitute, the city already had an agreement with them.
Okay. All right. And she told, and the, actually, the attorney told you what you did was right?
Yes, Plunkett Cooney's attorney told me that I did the right thing by contacting-
And, but based on your understanding of the, of the procedures and the charter, there was no violation and you were within your authority, correct?
Correct, yes. Not this time, I think. Not that I can think of.
All right. Then I will pass the witness to the commission, if any of the commission members would like to ask a question.
I just have a couple, and then the commissioners can chime in. So, the, the document that we received today, the clerk has indicated she made one copy of that document and placed it in Holly Tappman's personnel file. She never made another copy. It's her who drafted that document.
Hold on, I have to object, because you're actually relying on testimony that is not, we have not heard yet today.
Okay.
So, again, this is like, like you're-
All right, skip it, skip it, I'll, I'll start over.
Okay.
Where did you get the document that you produced today?
I got it from Chief Heslop.
Do you know where he got it?
You would have to ask him.
Okay. Do you know who typed that document?
No.
Would it surprise you if I said it was typed by Clerk Baxter?
No, I guess probably not. Looks like stuff that she would put together.
Ms. Baxter, did you type that?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
No, just stop.
Hold on, hold on. Now, let me ask you-
I typed it, one copy was made.
Hold on. There is, first of all, you have an opportunity to put out your-
Strike the question, strike the question.
You're, you know you can't call a witness in the middle of a cross?
One copy is placed in the personnel file.
You know, we're trying to get to the bottom of it, we're just trying to look at the charter.
Yeah, but we're trying to do it in the, in a way that's the right way to do it, that's, you know, it's a feature.
I, okay, so, the, the clerk typed that document.
You don't know that, but okay, continue on.
He does know that, because I said I did.
I, I verified that the clerk typed the document. I verified that the clerk put it in the personnel file and never made another copy.
How did you verify that?
So, the question-
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
By asking the clerk.
Oh, okay, so again-
But she doesn't have access to the personnel file.
I gave it to the interim treasurer.
Hold on, hold on.
All right, just stop.
Again, you're, you're-
Counselor, just relax and just pay attention, all right?
Yeah, I'm paying attention, I'm-
So, so, I'm just telling you that that document, number one, was not given to this board, that I recall. And number two, it, it, there was only one copy made, and we know who typed it. But we can get to that, you know, later around eight o'clock tonight. So, let's go to section, and, and, and bear in mind, these are allegations about the charter. There's nothing else of substance, in my opinion, going on here. So, Section 13G clearly indicates that upon the recommendation of the attorney, or upon its own initiative, the commission may retain special legal counsel to handle matters. Did the commission have, meet and decide to retain Plunkett Cooney? Or, in this instance, did you send Plunkett Cooney an email on your own?
Yes, I sent them this email with the complaint.
And you sent them an email advising them about a legal issue, correct?
Correct.
And they gave you advice about a legal issue?
They just said they were gonna contact you.
And they, they responded to your question about a legal issue? So, you, I mean, it's just, it's just undisputed in the record.
No, she told me that I did the right thing by contact, all I did was provide her with the information. She asked me for your name and phone number, and she contacted you, and I never had any other contact with her after that.
Okay, so you did reach out to the legal counsel on your own?
Yes, because they're part of our special-
And you understand, you understand the charter says only the commission should do that?
It doesn't say that.
It says-
It says I can do it here.
It says, upon the recommendation, I'm just going with the charter, Lisa, really, I'm just, it just says, upon the recommendation of the attorney, or on its own initiative, the commission may reach out to the lawyer.
No, it says retain.
Retain the lawyer.
Yes, I didn't retain them.
All right. So, with respect to number two, the city, I'm telling you, is going to incur legal fees based on you reaching out to that legal counsel. So-
Are you testifying now, or are you making, asking a question?
I'm just, I'm, do you understand that to be true?
No.
Okay, so we're not gonna get a legal bill?
I have no idea. She didn't tell me I was incurring any costs when I talked to her. I have no idea.
Okay. With respect to item number three, except for the purpose of an inquiry, inquiry meaning if you have a question, the commission and its members shall deal with the administrative service solely through the city manager. And neither the commission nor any member shall give orders to any subordinate. So, if you have a question, you can contact a department head. Do you agree with that?
The content, the department heads contacted me.
I know, but if, do you agree that generally you can contact a department head if you have a question?
Correct.
So, when they contacted you, what did they contact you about?
The background check not being done properly.
And did you bring that issue to the commission?
Yeah, at the September 2nd meeting.
Did you bring it, when did you first, when did you get that?
I, I got it before that, but we didn't have a meeting, and I wasn't gonna do it unless we did it at an open meeting.
Okay, so you, you, you didn't bring it to the commission until the next meeting?
No, but I read it to you over the phone.
I understand, parts of it.
The whole, well, I read, yeah, I read you, your section.
Okay, when you contacted me on August 20th, did, were you expecting that I would do something about your phone call?
I was expecting you to at least listen to what I had to say about my phone.
Were you expecting me to act on it?
I didn't know what you would do with it. You told me you would investigate it.
Okay, but what, did you call-
I just turned over information, that's all I was doing, turning over information.
Okay, but, but you turned it over to me-
Correct.
And, and it really says that only the commission, or a person authorized by the commission, has the power to-
Where does it say that? What, what number are you under?
I'm on section, Section 6.8, sir. I read it to you earlier.
Oh, you're on Section 6, what number are you at? You're in number four now?
Yes.
Oh, you went from 3.11, I thought, to, all right.
I'm just saying, I'm only going, folks, by what the charter says.
Now, what were you, what did you say it said, under 6.8?
I didn't say what it said, I'm reading it.
All right, what, where are you reading? Paragraph one?
The commission or any person or committee authorized by it for the purpose shall have the power to inquiry into the conduct of any department, office, or officer.
She testified that she did not make, they came to her.
What I'm saying here is that, would you agree with me that investigations are to be initiated by the commission as a body?
Well, if that's the case, how did she investigate, do this investigation? She didn't go to the commission?
This is, it's not, this is a hearing, Lisa, it's really not.
Investigation.
Yeah. So, so, would you agree with me that it says the commission can invest, can initiate the investigation?
Or, no, it says, "Or any person."
Or committee authorized by it, authorized by the commission.
No, the committee is authorized by it. It doesn't say any, it doesn't say the commission or any person authorized, or committee authorized. It does not say that.
Let me read it for the public. The, the commission, or any person or committee authorized by the commission, by it, shall have the power to inquire into the conduct of a department. Is that what it says?
Not exactly, no.
I just-
You didn't read it verbatim.
I'll read it verbatim. Does it say the commission, or any person or committee authorized by it for the purpose?
Didn't say any committee, it says, "Or committee."
Or committee.
Right?
Yes.
I don't know, putting words in there.
The commission, yeah, you, you know that. The commission, or any person or committee authorized by it for the purpose.
Right.
Shall have the power, shall have the power to inquire, to inquiry into the conduct of a department. Were you aware of any committee being authorized to undertake any investigation?
No.
Were you aware if the commission had authorized any investigation?
I don't know, I hadn't talked to them.
Okay. When, in your opinion, is a contract established with a lawyer?
Can you repeat that?
When do you think a, a contract is established?
Asked for a legal conclusion.
And-
Don't answer me.
A lot of your questions ask for legal conclusions, Counselor, and you wouldn't let me object. So, what we're saying under number five, Lisa, is that when you reached out to a lawyer, when a lawyer gets a phone call, under my understanding of the rules of ethics, and once you establish, you contact a lawyer for the purpose of a legal issue, you are establishing an attorney-client relationship. Doesn't require a written retainer. And the concern here is that by reaching out to the lawyer, you established a contract. Do you think you established a contract?
No.
Okay.
I did what it said I can do under the communications here. Asked a question.
Okay, and with respect to the, to the, again, with, back to the, to the, to the document that you produced this evening, you're not aware of who typed that?
No.
You only know you got it from the police chief?
Yeah.
You don't know where the police chief got it?
You'd have to ask him.
No, but you don't know where he got it?
Yeah.
You don't know, right? Okay, but it came into your possession?
Correct.
And did you immediately give that document to the city commission?
No.
Okay.
There's nothing that says I have to.
Enough said. All right.
I gave it to him, I wanted to give it to him, it said, I had the copies made, I just forgot to give it to him, because we got into it about-
Okay, I'm good.
All right. So, let me ask you a couple more questions, then. You never-
We, well, we, the commission, oh, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, commission members.
I have a question. So, I'm still kind of perplexed by this document that you received from Jim Heslop. And did Jim type it?
I don't know.
But you didn't know that at the time, right? We just now heard that it was Chris's document, that she typed it, it was her, it was her personal notes. So, at the time, you didn't know where that came from. Jim could've typed it, somebody in the police department could've typed it.
It didn't matter, there's nothing in here that's personal, so, didn't matter to me.
But it was enough to call Bob right away, that's, so you-
Because of the background check. It said to remove all these items from the background check. That was my concern, because we were supposed to do a Level 2.
But you didn't know where that document came from?
Doesn't matter, I was asking him if he knew about it.
The question is, where did the document come from?
She's asked that, and it's been asked, and it's been answered several times.
But you don't know where it originated? There's the key.
Right.
Where it originated, right? So, anybody could've written that.
Yeah.
You know?
Not signed.
So, have you ever been, I'm just asking, have you ever been warned before about contacting the city attorney and incurring fees that the taxpayers pay for?
Uh, hold on, I'm gonna, don't, don't answer that question, again.
It's a legitimate question.
It is not relevant, because there's no allegations that, that says this is-
I'm trying to set a precedent.
Yeah, but there's no precedent in the allegations.
Like, she's saying that she didn't know, she didn't know-
There's no precedent in the allegations.
She said, "I didn't know if I contacted the city attorney." And I'm saying, well, if it, she did it before, then she does know, right? That's all I'm saying, is if somebody, you know, past precedent sets future precedent, correct? I mean, if somebody says that they didn't know that if contacting the attorney caused fees, but yet I've got a document here that says that she's done this before, and incurred a lot, thousands of dollars that our taxpayers pay.
If that's the case, you could've put that in your allegation. But you didn't.
I put in the fact-
And the reason why you didn't is because, for, for whatever reason, you didn't put it in there, we're limiting this discussion to the allegations at hand.
All right, so she's not gonna answer that, let's move along.
Okay. You said that you had a formal complaint by an employee. Can you define formal complaint? What does formal mean to you?
I didn't say a formal complaint.
Exactly words, I just wrote them right down here when you said it. I received a formal complaint by a city employee. So, what does formal mean? Did you get a text? Did you get a voicemail?
I used the word formal.
No, she said it.
It's an email.
Well, our records will show it, because we're taping the meeting, so-
It's an email.
Few people are.
So, an email is a formal complaint?
Sure. It says in our thing, it doesn't have to be written, or, yeah. It doesn't have to be written, it can just be verbal, it says right in the policies and procedures.
And then, and then, and then you made everybody aware of that formal complaint?
Everybody got a copy of it, except you.
Why didn't I get a copy?
I don't know, you'd have to ask her. Not my problem. But it went out. But it went out. I mean, you can ask all the rest of them. I even sent them an email, where I tried to ask everybody to do something about this so that we didn't get into trouble with it. Because this is the first time we've ever had a complaint where it came in citing our city manager and our attorney and our clerk. It's the first time. I mean, I've had complaints before brought to me, but never one like this. So it was a new area.
Ms. Mayor, I have a question about that, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I'm-
You texted me that it was important that I talk to you about this issue specifically after that email, and I didn't respond to you because of the Open Meetings Act. That wouldn't have been an open meeting if we were to all talk about-
No, if we're doing it, I was trying to get you to call, I left you a phone call-
But the email was to every commissioner.
And I left you two texts, trying to get you to call, just me, so that I could explain to you what was going to go on. Because we cannot do it as a group.
Why can't, why couldn't we, as a commission, then meet? That's what concerned me about it.
So you received a text that was addressed to everyone?
No, I got a text, I got voicemails, I got a lot of communication-
I didn't get any.
-from her about this, and I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable responding to you because I didn't want to have a personal conversation, commissioner to commissioner, about an issue that is brought to the commission unless we're in a public meeting.
That's fine, perfectly okay.
Don't you think that's valid?
No.
I just, I just didn't want to get into this.
You need to read the Open Meetings Act. If we all had an email together and we were commuting, going back and forth, then that's a violation of the open meetings. If I just want to talk to you personally, that's not a violation of the open meetings.
Anyone else?
In fact, my email here says that you needed, these other ones, you could contact me, but we cannot discuss it because it's a violation of open meetings.
Right, exactly, that's what confused me, and then you started other personal contact.
But I contacted you personally.
Okay, so I don't think-
Is there any, any other commissioners have questions?
I have no further questions of Ms. Hendricks, so at this point in time, I guess, we, I would ask-
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
So after you sent the email request saying, "Everyone, we need to look into this matter, we need to figure out, you know, take it seriously," why did you go out on your own?
Because I never got a response or a callback from anybody.
Forgive me, but what's the saying? The highway to hell's paved in good intentions? I mean, that doesn't give you the right to step outside the boundaries.
I waited.
So wait till the next meeting.
But you can't, you have an employee that's being retaliated against.
Allegedly.
Allegedly. You cannot just wait. You have to protect that employee.
But that doesn't give you the right to step outside.
No, that's why I reached out to all of you to try to do something, and you didn't do anything.
Acceptable.
She, there's no, and I'm sorry, you know, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Bryson. I would love for you to cite a charter statute that supports your statement, and no disrespect to you, but-
Counselor, I think he can say, ask the questions right now. That was your rule.
No disrespect to you, but there's nothing in there that says that she can't do that.
Mr. Bryson, you-
Oh, you!
You have the right to ask whatever question.
So go ahead.
No, I'm done, I mean-
I try to do things, I read these documents, I read our policies and procedures, that's in there, I read the personnel policies and procedures, that's in there. This whole thing was to protect an employee.
So I have one more question. Lisa, when you contacted me on the 20th, which I agree, everything you said, we said, who contacted you that prompted you to contact me?
Jim.
Jim contacted you?
Yeah, he was contacted, and Jim contacted me.
Who was Jim contacted by?
I'm assuming Megan.
So Megan contacted Jim, Jim contacted-
Hold on, again, I have to, you're, do you see this contact?
No.
So you don't know who contacted Jim, do you?
Correct.
You weren't there, you did not witness anything?
Correct.
All right, so don't assume, please.
That's what happened to him, he was assuming.
Are you done, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. When you contacted me on the 20th, you contacted me for a reason. You said to me, "Hey, I've got some information that we really need to act on," right?
Yep.
Where did you get the information?
I got it from Jim. He brought it to me.
And did Jim tell you where he got the information?
You would have to ask him.
Did he tell you? I'm not, I just want to know if you, did you ever come to learn where he got the information?
Yes.
And where did he get the information?
Well, he advised me that it came from Megan.
Do you know where Megan got the information?
No, I do not.
Do you know where she could have got the information?
No, I do not.
Okay, that's it.
But one thing, too, is when I talked to you about the anonymous letter, I did not have a copy of the anonymous letter at that time.
How did you know there was an anonymous letter?
Somebody told me that there was one. I think Megan told me that she thought there was an anonymous letter.
Do you know how, you know how she knew about the anonymous letter?
No, I don't. So I contacted you, and you confirmed that there was an anonymous letter.
And I confirmed that I wrote an email to this board saying everyone should get a copy.
You wrote an email to the ma, I didn't get a copy of any email.
Well, I emailed saying everybody should get a copy, right?
Yes, to the mayor.
Right. But the point here is-
None of us did get a copy.
I think the point here, Lisa, is, is not in any bad way, is when you contacted me on the 20th, you were relaying to me information you got from someone else.
Correct.
And you got it generally from Jim, and you believed Jim got it from Megan.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So there's, and again, you know, you had no way of verifying the legitimacy of this?
Correct.
It was just- Counselor, can we, you punted back to this commission to ask.
Yeah, is there anybody else that has a question?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So to that end, yes, it says that we need to treat them seriously and investigate them, but it does not list a specific timeframe. The only timeframes this section lists, again, read it, pine through it, the timeframes that the, this section of the Policy and Procedures manual suggests is the timeframe in which the incident be from the reporting, not the commission to react upon the incident. So myself, like Commissioner Kreidler, wanted to wait until the next regularly scheduled meeting to be able to do it in an open forum and everything else, and-
Okay. The problem with that is that you have a person alleging retaliation, so you're going to let them be retaliated against for two weeks till you get to a meeting? You can't do that to an employee. That's why I begged you guys, that's why I begged you guys to do something sooner than-
That goes back to where, you know, in terms of contacting the employee, have them do it through the proper channels that were listed in the procedure to begin with.
It is. She's allowed to contact six people.
So, okay.
But that's her deal, not mine.
If any legal fees are incurred by the city based on the Plunkett-Booney communication, would you be willing to pay the bill?
Well, I'd have to see what portion of its mind, if I only talked to him for five minutes.
It could be high with Plunkett-Booney.
Shouldn't be anything.
Yeah, it was a five to 10-minute phone call, that's it.
And in our phone-
Be willing to pay for that portion.
In our phone call regarding the city manager background check, you indicated, too, that, you know, some of the background check items could be removed.
No, okay.
You said you agreed that certain ones were, you know, over the top and that you were okay with them.
Only the medical, only the medical. I did not agree to that. But I also told the committee, this board voted to do a level two, and they needed to stick to that level two. And somebody dumbed it down to less than, way less than a level.
Right, which, when we met, we all agreed that that was no good, and, you know, the city attorney-
Correct, and nothing's happened since then. There's been no investigation completed, there's been no nothing.
The state police were involved, communicated with, and then-
They declined.
Not-
They declined, but they said we had internal issues, so it still should have been looked at, and that was never brought back to this board. He sent us an email, but nothing was brought back to the board to discuss that part of the investigation again. You remember a meeting?
He said, internal issues, what was said actually was, charter violations may have occurred, or something, okay, so that's-
He said there was nothing criminal, but there were-
Correct.
...internal issues that should probably be looked at, and we've never done that.
I don't recall it should probably be looked at. Way that I read the email was-
But we still never discussed it as a commission after that, we haven't.
That's-
Correct.
I mean, neither here nor there, but we did.
You received his answer, I sent you all his answer.
But we can't, we have to do our business in public.
I'm sorry, I'm not following this, maybe I'm a little out of the loop, but is that relevant to any of the allegations?
No, it was just following-
Oh, okay, all right.
Following up with a-
Oh, yeah, okay.
This was discussed at tonight's meeting, yes, I mean-
Right, I guess I just don't, and I don't mean, I just, I don't know anything about it, I don't see, I don't know where it, what allegation it applied to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, do you have more questions?
No.
Does anybody else have any questions?
That was it.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. I move that we-
I'm going to ask a couple quick rebuttal questions.
Still does have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why was this called a special meeting when we have a council meeting four days from now? Why couldn't we have it as a council meeting?
Because there's a certain time limit, we have to do it within 10 days.
No.
Yes.
No, you have to give 10 days notice.
Yes.
10 days notice.
10 days notice.
Ask your city manager and your city attorney.
You don't have to do it within 10 days.
Tried to do a special meeting bill because of the time that would be involved.
For a regular meeting. You did it as, you're doing it as, because we didn't, yeah.
At a regular meeting, this would have just absorbed the whole time period.
So just great-
But the time was so, in the afternoon, I had to take off work, I know that, that everybody here can't deal with the time that you did, why couldn't have done it at 7:30?
You didn't have to come.
Counselor, can I just ask-
So do I, we had issues that none of us, some of us couldn't make it, this was the time.
I would ask, before we get into those things, I would ask for, I guess, the dismissal of these alleged charges, and all six of them to be dismissed, and for one of the board members or commission members to make that, and have a vote on that to have this, you know, and end this meeting right now. I don't see any violations. I saw, I don't believe the charter applies in any of these, there's nothing that prevents her from doing these things. You all had an opportunity to see this, it sure as heck doesn't look like anything that I've ever seen in a personnel file. She did not take it, there's no evidence that she took it, she received it, you have no way of knowing that. And so I would ask for all these charges to be dismissed and move on, and try and make this city a better place to live for the people who live here.
That's what we're trying to do, so I move that we call the question.
Counselor, do you mind if we just, I just want to clear up one thing.
Hold on, I think I would like to have that motion made first.
No, you can't tell them what motion to make.
As you stated.
I'm sorry?
You can't tell them what motion to make.
I didn't, I asked.
And we're not done yet.
And Mr. Claussen has a motion on the-
Counselor, we're not done yet, so can I-
Hold on, sir. You said at the beginning.
All right, go ahead, do what you, I just want to clear up the fact of the document, who typed it, that's all I want to do. Oh, our records complete.
All right, clear it up.
So Clerk Baxter, the document that you saw tonight, did you type that?
Yes.
What did you do with it?
I gave it to our interim treasurer and asked her to put it in the personnel file. I don't have access to the personnel file.
Did you make any copies?
I made no copies, I made one copy.
All right, and so you never saw it again?
I never saw it again.
Okay, that's all, I just want to make sure.
So I want to ask a follow-up question to that, then. So you never saw her put it in the personnel file?
I actually saw her put it in the personnel file.
You saw her put it in the personnel file?
She said, "I'm going to put it in the top drawer right here, the per, personnel file," she goes, "Watch me, I'm going to put, place it in there, put it right in the top drawer here for the treasurer when she comes in."
That's all I want to clear up.
When did that happen?
I don't have the date in front of me.
Was-
It was immediately following our subcommittee meeting that we met.
But it was before we hired the city manager?
Yes.
So she wasn't really a personnel at the time?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
She was not a personnel-
I just wanted to clear up-
We started, we had contracts, we had contracts that we were drawing up, and we kept them in the personnel file.
But just for clarification, Holly was not an actual person, employee of the city.
No, she was not, we had a background check done, we put that in there.
All right, thank you.
So there was no personnel file?
There was a personnel file, she started it.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we call the question.
So I'll make a motion, I move that-
Bill, I made a motion to accept, to drop all the charges, as her attorney said, and we're waiting for a second.
No, actually, I made the motion to call the question before you said that.
Was there a second on Bill's motion?
No.
No.
It was interrupted.
All right, so, go ahead. There's no second?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, I move that Commissioner Hendrick be removed from office under section 5.4 of the city charter for the reasons stated in the notice of hearing and based on the hearing process. I'm convinced Commissioner Hendrick violated the city charter at sections 3.13 golf, 3.14, 3.11, 6.8, and 13.2.
So we have a motion and support on the table, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Commissioner Claussen?
No.